Welcome to the meeting, Scarborough zoning board for April 11th, 2018. I get a call from the board. Minutes passed, the committee has passed.
Mr. Lee's?
Yep.
Mr. Eber?
Present.
Mr. Crockett?
Here.
Mr. Maroon? Mr. Loizal?
Here.
And Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Any questions?
Appeals by the United States of America, Superior Court, which stands on the nation. They are, this is all.
Welcome to our new all in.
Thank you.
We'll start with you. So you will be not knowing that we're trying to talk, go over everything, if you have questions, you can start asking everything. Mr. Chair, Mr. Please. Everybody have a chance to review the meeting minutes from last call? Second, all favors. All in discussion of the meeting minutes. All favor?
Just a few exceptions.
Alright, kind of a newer procedure, Mr. Loizal. So you'll probably see our emails here. You'll actually go through and sign after the appeal's over. It's time to bring them back, take the meeting minutes to do a further finding of that. So we can get it in detail, so they're going for signing them. We're going to from the beginning of the next meeting now. And just, they're approved at the end of the last meeting, but we're just doing the actual signature and finalizing them at the beginning of the new meeting.
Can you talk about this after? Can you bring up this topic?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that's what we're kind of stepping out a little bit.
Sure. I'd just like to discuss the thought behind this. The board's interested in this.
Sure. Okay, so we have the approval of the draft worth decision for appeals heard on March 14th, 2018. Does anybody have any issues?
I want to comment.
Yes.
On the appeal for the court, I mean, the 23rd row.
Let's take the order.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. No, let's tell them all.
And you don't need to, you don't need to send them down for a signature. So you just need to approve it. Okay, we'll set up the appeal 2626 for David. Any questions on that appeal? And all in favor of that appeal? Any questions? Appeal number 2627, Paulie Whitehead. Any questions or comments on that? Second. No questions or comments. All is in favor? Appeal 2628, Mary Roschek. Any questions on that?
Yeah, under findings, number one, I just want to clarify, it says that the daycare will not employ anyone who does not reside at the residence. And I just don't want him on a picture she's not permitted. I know she's saying that she may employ someone outside. She was someone on her property she is allowed to. So I just, I don't know if that is very different way of thinking.
Well, I rewrote the discussion last time. I think that, didn't she say she's going to keep it up to four? Should I speak to that?
Yeah. Sorry.
Great, it's all. So I think she had the ability to go up to six or eight people, six. And then she has six clients, six infants. And she has indicated that she does go up to six and potentially hire someone else. But the discussion around her not able, wanting to stay at four, four infants rather than going to six, she probably would not hire a second person.
I think all I'm saying is whatever she decided, maybe it's been nice to come up with her.
Mr. Chair.
What did we simply add at this time at the end of that sentence? Because the standards and the ordinance will allow her to have one person before the outside. Does that make more sense?
Without any other question? All is in favor? Appeal 2629, William Weeks. Any questions or concerns or comments about that? Appeal number 2630, again, William Weeks. Any questions or comments on that?
Second.
All favor? Appeal 2631, Rick Harts. Discussions, comments? Second. All favor? And we'll take your steps. We'll have a discussion at the end of the meeting. While I'm signing these, we can grant the appeals. Appeal number 2632, the reduction of yard size request by Tim and Jane Gallagher and Barry and Linda Christman for 21 River Sands Drive, assessment of 21 Cross 75, representing. Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Tim Gallagher.
Yeah, right to the mic and figure your address as well.
Yes, I'm Tim Gallagher, property of 21 River Sands Drive.
Just state what you're trying to do.
I'm trying to go, for limited reduction, reduction of yard size variance. On 10 feet.
Did you want to get out any questions? Did you have any? Oh, yes, excuse me. Mr. Longstaff, please, give us staff comments.
So this is the appeals for Gallagher and Christman, party that owns 21 River Sands. As Mr. Gallagher said, I'm sorry, was it Gallagher?
Yes, I'm here, yes.
As he stated, it is a limited reduction of yard size. It's for a 10-foot reduction on the front yard setback to extend an existing deck that wraps around the back, the side of the structure, and to extend it to wrap around the front of the structure. The property is eligible for the limited reduction of yard size as it was built originally in 1978. The applicant does, he has demonstrated that he does have standing to appeal. He has provided a copy of his tax bill with his application packet. So now, let me go through his explanation of the details.
Great. Thank you.
Not sure what I need to do here, but we're looking to, at a technical extent, there are, we bought the house 12 years ago. We had some nice views to the ocean, and some of those views were taken away from us because the house was built alongside us. I'm not sure if you have the address, but in fact, I believe that the owner of that house sent an email to Brian acknowledging that they did not have any problems with this request. And so we're just trying to extend our views out to the front of the house.
Do you have some questions to go over and ask what we're over now? So just if you want to read in your answer.
Sure.
App candidate, app kept a limited reduction of yard size must demonstrate following: The existing building or structure on the lot for which the limited production of yard size is requested for erected prior June 3rd, July 3rd, 1991, where the lot is a vacant non-21 reference.
Yes.
The request of reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties utilized in the home.
Yes.
Due to the physical features of the lot? Yeah. If you could just give us a little bit more information on that, rather than just me asking.
Sure. With reference to?
Yeah, I think you have your answer somewhere.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I didn't bring a copy of that. I apologize for not coming fully prepared. With regards to the first question, the house was built in 1978.
Second question, the street side deck will allow us to enjoy views as neighbors on the
same side of River Sands Drive enjoy ocean views from attached decks. I sent along with the packet a couple of examples of homes on the same side of the street that had similar type decks that were requested to construct.
Great, thank you. Due to the physical features of the lot and or the location of the existing structure of the lot, it would not be practical to construct a proposed expansion and enlargement or new structure in conformance with the current local yard size requirements.
The proposed deck will be uniform as it stands across the front of the property and the full length of the house.
And four, the impacts and effects of the enlargement expansion of the building or the structure upon the existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of the building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirement.
There will be no impact on the existing uses by reduction of yard size from 40 to 30 feet. There are no neighbors sidelined to be affected. There will be no additional maintenance issues other relates to the town's public works department.
Thank you. Do you have any questions from the board? You said there was something sent in?
I sent in packets, 10 copies of packets. In those packets, there were pictures of houses.
But you had said that there was someone else that had sent in on your behalf.
Oh, I'm sorry, our neighbor who I referred to as replacing their, was actually a house that was built in Canada, then was delivered and assembled on the same street. And they had sent in an email to Brian, Jerry, I don't know if you received that?
We don't, but we can notate that, you know, letting us know that.
Yeah.
Add that in. Do we have anybody to open it up to the public? Anybody in the public who should discuss on this matter? See if there's none in the public hearing. No questions from the board at all? Hopefully findings of fact? Question one, existing building or structure on the lot which limited reduction of yard size presidential is requested for erected prior July 3rd, 1991, or the lot is a vacant non-conforming law record? Just that being placed. Just with the fact that it was built in 1978? Maybe it was just, you know, if you have any findings of fact that I have?
So far, I think it's pretty straightforward. It says it was built in 1978, which I certainly believe from that area of the house.
I agree. It's pretty straightforward. I think we're good on that. All in favor of one being met? The request of reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties utilized in the zoning district.
Well, in the packet, there are several other houses.
If I could pass for just a moment, let me look a little deeper.
Well, I think the applicant has shown pictures of some, he's just looking to enjoy the scene he did have before, and lost that of similar properties in the neighborhood he already had or joined.
Also showing by the evidences provided on 13 River Sands Drive and 5 River Sands Drive, you see decks that wrap around the house. And 21 River Sands Drive almost looks, almost looks out of place by not having the wraparound deck. So I don't really see a question or issue with this.
Do you have a number of properties in your area that also have a front line reduction that would be similar to this?
I'm not sure I can answer that question. I didn't do any research on that. I didn't take any distance measures from the existing decks of the neighbor's house to the street.
I was looking at the photos and I can't tell from the photos that were presented whether this is, and it's more a character question around this particular question, even though it doesn't ask around character. I'm just trying to get to that.
From the street view, it looks like it's, would be about the same distance as the proposed. They don't stick out closer to the road or without measuring, I could try.
But under the future distance, it would be similar, you believe, to other homes that are adjacent to you?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we don't have the gold or some maps or the numbers. We can look at it and it's good.
I'll ask one more question. Did you take, did you take these photographs?
Yes.
So did you take these photographs dating from the road?
Yes.
Okay. So if we use the road as a basis for looking at these photographs, you can see that they're all roughly the same. Obviously, 21 River Sands is a little bit closer to the road than the others are. Thank you. I would, I would agree that based upon the pictures, and you have no way to tell by measurements, based upon the pictures and what we're being told by the applicant, it would appear that it's similar distance or same distance. Also, where the pictures have been taken from the road, it seems like they're all the same also. All in favor of two being met? Janus? Three, due to the physical features of the lot and or the location of existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct a proposed expansion and enlargement or new structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirements.
If he wants to step across the front of his house, that's where it's headed up. That's what he's asking for. He's asking for behind this house, he's asking for in front of this house. If I was to have difficulty with this, it would be around that the needing for this deck is based on view. And we don't necessarily, we're asking for a change in or a variance in the zone in this particular application just for view. Struggle with that a little bit because when people come because they've got physical issues or they're trying to change and get a variance from either side or front setback, it's usually around a physical need for more space to more match what we have for other homes in that area not around view. So I'm struggling a little bit with this, that it's just, we're expanding this, we're going to give a variance just for someone to get a view.
Can you elaborate on that? Is there more reason than just the view?
No, there's a lot of reason. Other than for the comfort and the enjoyment of the area, the spiritual area, we, it's a lot of high incomes in that area, and we're just trying to maintain the quality of our enjoyment of our location.
When I look at question number three, I don't really see a line to the rest of why you want the expansion. I see that you want to put a deck on. You can't put a deck on the other side of the house because there's already a deck on that side of the house. There's only really one side of the house right there that allows you to have the deck that no other people would want.
I would agree with the shoe. I would also, getting back to Mr. Loizal's earlier point where character really isn't a required factor for this application, but having a wraparound fences on other houses in the area nearby does, for me, show that other houses are also enjoying this in the same way. And again, do the features of the slot, the features of the house, the fact that you already have a deck on one side, you want it on another side to make it a wraparound, we'll see and show that. I would probably have to say agree with Mr. Loizal, that we never really look at it solely just on the view. And that's basically what you're saying. You're looking at it just on the view, like if there was a necessity to have it there or we needed it for some things, particularly to the home for usage of it, that might be something that was a little bit easier to say yes to. But just the view, I think we've come back on other ones in the past where we've said no, just based upon solely just the view.
And what would be other requirements or aspects of getting your approval if in fact it was other than the view?
I mean, you don't, in order to kind of utilize the house, you don't really need to have the view. So I think it's an item you'd like to have so that you can get the view that you'd like, but it's not really something that we generally say you need it, it's something that you definitely need to have, or that you utilize the home, be able to have it home, like any person down there would.
And so if in fact, they went and measured some of the other decks that were wrapped around the front of the building for the street, and they were out of code and there weren't any, any variances allowed by that, what would that, what would be the position of the other committee of the board?
We wouldn't really have a position on that, I don't believe. Maybe there's long staff, you can elaborate on that. He's asking like if you went and measured other homes and they were out of conformance or not in code, what would be our position on it? Right. So that, it wouldn't have, like I said, it wouldn't have anything to do with?
No bearing in this case, right?
Yeah. I just wanted to confirm. It basically wouldn't have. Something may have happened, it may have been before zoning or whatever, I don't know what. We have to look at each case on its own merits. So based upon that, on three, all in favor? Three, opposed? Two? Four, the impacts and effects?
Excuse me, what does that mean? What are the three and two?
Do you have three to pass?
Okay, so that's a pass, is that?
Question three passed?
Yes, okay.
Yes, we vote on the whole.
No, I understand, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, if we go three each one individually, then we have to vote on the actual entire appeal.
I suspected that, but I wanted to know.
The impacts and effects of the enlargement expansion of your building or structure on the existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of the building or structure which conforms to the yard requirement.
I think, I think what he's trying to do here meets their requirements. He's putting on a deck. Both homes have the same deck. Let's see the pictures of them. I'm sad. Yeah, I don't think there's a significant change to, from this property to any of the surrounding properties.
I agree with the board. I mean, you've provided photos showing that the other properties already have these similar decks.
I agree with the shoe and Mr. Loizal that other buildings and structures are similar in your neighborhoods. So what you're proposing isn't out of place to the surrounding properties. I would agree. I think based upon what you provided us with, it appears that it would be, the effects wouldn't be any different than any of the other structures down there you've given us information on. And I think it would conform to the ancestors, like existing uses in the neighborhood. All in favor of four? Janus? Any other questions or comments from the board? Excuse me. Applicant is not commencing construction of the enlargement expansion building or structure for which the limited reduction of yard size is requested, so that the border appeals is not considered an after-effect application. We need to do this one. You have any?
No, I haven't disfounded that. No construction is commenced on the structure. We're just waiting for the pending approval to start construction of that.
Thank you.
No problem.
Very common. Seeing that there's no comments from anybody, it appears that it meets the needs as far as everybody's concerned. And all in favor of that being met? Janus? Any other questions or comments?
I don't think we have a problem.
Yes, there was none. So all in favor of appeal? Motion, action?
Two. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve appeal number 2632 as presented.
All in favor as presented? Three, opposed? Two?
Can I ask you a question? You had mentioned something at the beginning of the meeting that this does not, this goes through another process.
You're all cited as a tonight?
Okay, so I can wait tomorrow to get any third building permit?
There needs to be a written notice to the applicant stating the board's findings. That's by law, that has to go. Karen will provide that just as a submission, extracts all this information, puts it into a, not, not the decision, but just the issue. It may not happen tomorrow, we have seven days, within seven days. But the decision will stand as of tonight. The decision was made tonight. The letter, the written letter to the applicant stating the results of this decision won't occur until within seven, in the shoot for two, three days. This written decision is simply for the record that it has the findings of fact and the conclusions of law, of which we didn't really do a lot of. And that's what I'm trying to extract bits and pieces of, and we'll have that discussion later. But that's one of the reasons is that nobody goes down and lists findings of fact. We talked about a lot of stuff, and some of that stuff is pertinent, some of it isn't, but it's all part of the. but it's all part of the record because it's on the tape. And I extract out of that the factual stuff, define the findings of fact, and I extract out of your comments the conclusions of law and bring them back to you for approval. So I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, I'm simply trying to organize the thought process so that if a court looks at this, they can make sense out of it. So that, that's why, but that doesn't have any bearing on your decision tonight. You voted to approve this, that's the decision. Yeah, but he'll, he has two things he needs to do. He'll get a certificate of variance approval, which he needs to record within 90 days. If he does not do that, the variance becomes void. He'll want to, as soon as he gets that certificate, march right down to the Gumbly County Registry of Deeds and record that because he also wants to have a building permit and you can't issue that until, until that, until variance is recorded. So there's a couple of pieces of paper he needs to get, this is not one of them. What we're doing here, the findings of fact and conclusions of law are part of the record and he can certainly have a copy of that if he wants, but he's going to receive a letter stating that his variance was approved and he's going to receive the notarizable certificate of variance approval if that's what is reported in the registry. So those are the two important pieces for the applicant.
I guess his question was how soon can be...
You can submit your building permit application as soon as you want. We won't approve it until we get a recording, right? Yeah. Okay?
All right, thank you very much for your considerations, I appreciate it.
Appeal number 2622, variance request by Anthony D'Amico, 93 Sterling Road, assessors map R100, parcel one. Mr. Longstaff, can you introduce this as well as the comments?
So this is one that was, came before us but was tabled a couple of months ago. The applicant is applying for a standard hardship variance to install a deck, construct a deck on the side of this house closer to the resource. It's basically, his property butts up against the wetland that's associated with the marsh, the river down at Spurwick Road. From the upland edge of the wetland, there is a 70, a required 75-foot setback for property. As you look through your, your application package, you'll see the plan provided by Northeast Civil Solutions clearly shows a 75-foot wetland setback. The house is entirely in that, that 75 feet. This, so because it's in the shoreline zone, the only available relief is through the standard hardship variance, and as you know, the four criteria need to show that there's no reasonable return on this property but for the issue itself of variance. The, as I stated in my variance notes, section 12C1 of our shoreline zoning ordinance, chapter 405C, states that no structure which is less than the required setback from the normal high waterline, the water body, intruder stream, or the upland edge of a wetland shall be expanded toward the water body, intruder stream, or outlet. We'll let the applicant state their case and then during public comment, I'll want to make mention of a couple of letters that we have from state departments.
So this is one to get the setup?
Yes, required by our ordinance, our shoreline zoning ordinance, any variance requests are forwarded to the Department of Environmental Protection, shoreline zoning coordinated by Morse, and that's according to our ordinance, I have to do that for every variance that happens in the shoreline zone.
Could you please state the name and who you represent this?
It was Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions here this evening representing Mr. D'Amico. That's Brian Suris, who they're looking at is...
Yeah, they have it.
Okay. Better?
Yes.
So as, as Brian stated, what we have here is a property on Spurwick Road right near the entrance to Higginson Beach, Oceanale. This is a property that has been, was created, or the property was created many, many decades ago, the house was actually built in 1969. You'll take a look at the, or if you would take a look at photographs in your packet if you had a chance, you'll see that the, one is a photograph that shows a great deal, a great number of the properties that were on this particular location, the properties that are on your side, that just puts it into a spatial perspective of what this property actually looks like relative to the other properties, and some of which were actually built before this, it's not part of the subdivision, and several of which were constructed afterwards. Essentially what happened is, we have great background, is this property has been purchased and sold several times since it was created. One of the latter owners actually, without a permit, built a deck across the back, and I don't know how long it was there, but the codes officer at the time, sort of, finally discovered it through whatever means, and so through the codes file, saw the permits and said, you have to get a permit for that. And the owner allegedly, this story was told to us by Mr. D'Amico, the owner, and allegedly said, okay, I'll file a permit. The codes officer said, well, not so fast. It's obviously still not a permit, but it's really not going to be much good because unless you're going to run this on appeals, which you're doing, I can't just grant you a permit for a deck, you're going to have to take down the deck or those appeals, which that individual did, and that individual was a builder and built the deck quite well, but nevertheless without a permit, and he was denied the variance request. So he ended up being required to take down the deck. There's another, there's a small deck that's on the side, it's not an issue, this is a back deck that he had to take down. In conjunction with the deck, he had also constructed several sliding doors that go across the back of this property, double slams, one off the living room, one off the dining room, one off the master bedroom, all of which looked themselves very nicely to the deck, unfortunately the deck has not been there. When the D'Amicos went to purchase the property, it's a fairly modest house, they weren't able to purchase it just, and their, extent of their due diligence, which you will readily admit, was to ask the contractor, owner of the house, I would like to be able to put a deck out here, and the owner said, oh, that's not really a problem, the solitudes are already there, the deck plate is already there, all you have to do is go request a permit, anything else, said, well, things didn't work out quite the way the D'Amicos expected. Unfortunately, it's a neophyte, it doesn't have anything to do with the plan as far as background is concerned. He discovered, I'm not sure if he should ran, that the due diligence he thought he had done with the previous owner didn't work out too well, in fact, quite, quite the opposite. At the time, they didn't really have the means to be able to pursue anything, in a couple of little venues. And it was only this past summer, this past year, that they said, okay, we're now in a position to be able to reinstate the deck, and this is when he learned about this information, he contacted us, and he asked us to go survey the property, and said, here's what I would like to be able to do with the survey. Well, that's a little bit different story, because, well, though, as some of you will know, you've been here for over a quarter century and dumped this board quite often, and I know where things go, and I know where things lie, typically. And I said, okay, well, we can certainly submit to the DEP, that may or may not work, and we can submit to a town, that also may or may not work. We did submit to the DEP and we do have a permit, which is here for, so from a project management standpoint, the DEP did approve this, primarily because it does not impugn the 25-foot setback, which is pretty sad to say for any given one, unless it's a current property and they're using this as that. So from that perspective, we do want to stay in permit. However, as Brian alluded to earlier, he also sent, quite appropriately, this survey request to the gentleman, Mike Morse, who is the shoreline coordinator of the DEP, and Mike also said, as the codes officer will be responsible for doing, saying, you can't, if you can't just come into my office and give a, Brian paraphrasing, so I don't need technical words in here, but if somebody walks into the codes office and they have a request for a permit, and they've got three acres of land, the house is covered, which you know about, you can typically get the permit pretty quickly. In this particular case, Brian and Mike Morse were absolutely correct in saying, well, this is within 75 feet, the request for the deck is within 75 feet, so toward that end, no, I'm not going to give you a permit. Mike Morse, too, who I also spoke after he wrote the letter, wanted to just clarify a few things from his perspective, also said the same thing, said, basically, for his people that have a lot of drawing on already, essentially said, my task as the shoreline coordinator is to be able to advise towns or individuals as they may be on what they can and cannot do relative to the regulations that face down. So Mike's letter, in his conversation, he reiterated that he advises towns, he is not a project manager of the DEP, he embodies the DEP, he already granted the permit, but he advises communities, not just for a road, saying, if something is supposed to be a 75-foot setback and it doesn't, that my advice is, you don't do, you don't approve it, but that's why there is a board's appeal. So he does not approve or deny anything, he just makes suggestions and says, if you think you've got your argument, go ahead, there's certainly a better situation, it's unprecedented in Oregon, that's said many, many decades ago, for this type of thing, but that's for guarantee, that's performance is guaranteed of future ability. So we're here because the D'Amicos have said, we're hurting, basically, in that, do you think of a reasonable return on our house? Well, if you want it, it's a house, you could live in it, it has a return, to be sure. Is it reasonable? That's the subjective question over which we often chatter back and forth, meaning it is only worth appeals in any applicant. So it's, it's challenging to be able to say, this is why I have to take a look at the photographs from the surrounding area, there are other homes, both before and after shoreline zone was enacted, that through whatever reason have considerable permit structures, some of them are actually separate structures, you see in the photographs, there are some outlying structures, sheds, there's an outdoor kitchen on one of them, there's a driveway, there's a pool, an in-ground pool, et cetera, many of which are considerably closer to the resource than what this, this property would actually have, even though the deck is there. Now, another issue I brought up with Mike to say, how do we play this? There is a, the septic system for this site is behind the structure as well. In fact, when you take a look at the photographs, you'll see a slight bounded area, that is the septic. A septic like an in-ground pool is not really a structure per se in terms of house or a shed or detached garage or whatever you might see. However, it is still a structure that is, in this case, between the house, between where the deck would go on the house, and the actual resource. Does that have any specific bearing on the deck? As a deck, no, but it does as far as improvements of the property is concerned. We are not pushing a precedent to try to go extremely close to the upland edge of the wetlands, and this is all upland area, but the wetlands are close. Point being is that there is a septic system relatively new, or a recent one, that is considerably closer, that's the amount you see on the photo. I asked Mike about that and he said, well, you know, we understand that everybody has to have a septic, or anybody who's not a public supporter, obviously, and it's kind of a subdivision. That's the kind of thing where he says, I can't deal with the past, I mean, that's really why there is a zoning board of appeals to determine whether or not, that is part of the reason to be able to grant a deck that's not going to go anywhere close to the septic system or closer to the septic system, and is certainly not going to go closer to the resource than where the septic system already is. Another issue with this that the D'Amicos brought up is that, as you can see from the photographs, there is a, about a 10 to 11-foot strip of gravel that is across the back. It was underneath the deck, it's still there, gravel's not a big deal, but from the, as far as permitting is concerned, but from the DEP's perspective, it is considered generally an impervious surface area. Now, water can still go through gravel, to be sure, but it's not earthy material. The point being there is that from the DEP's perspective, from the way that we already have the permit, they took a look at this and said, this is not an issue as far as the DEP's concerned. So our contention is, if there is a, a structure in the septic system that's already closer and there is a, quite a wide strip of gravel, it's not just the back wetway, it goes around the house, a little bit wider in the back, that's already there, considered an impervious surface area, and the DEP has already taken a look at it and said, that is not an issue with us, that gave us food for thought to be able to say, let's go back to the board. Because with Mike's, with Mike Morse's initial letter and Brian's feedback from a month ago, or here two months and a half ago, we tabled this discussion because I needed to talk to some of these people, Brian, and just to say, I don't want to waste anybody's time, but is there an argument here based on what they would like to have, what they feel they need to have from a safety perspective because of the sliders in the back, they have young children, doesn't matter, house could go in anybody, but sliders and open door to wherever, and now they've got a four-foot drop, and what they've done is they literally took slats lumber and, as you can see in the photograph, and they nailed it up against this so that nobody, I don't think they have children, open sliders, off the go. So we would literally like to be able to just put the deck up at the back where it had been, but was put illegally. With the deck plate already in place, the solitudes already in place, with the underlaid already in place, and with the DEP permit, we respectfully ask that we be able to have a favorable consideration for the deck that's particular there. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions or address any comments that you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Longstaff, do you have some other stories? Why don't we let the board members ask a question? We should hold this person. I want the board to ask a question. Do you have any questions? See if they have questions. Let's have this discussion.
Mr. Fisher, thank you for coming in. A question for you, can you help me paint a picture of the timing of what the old resident had for the deck when that was taken out and this new resident took over and heard about what he could do and that, that kind of stuff? I'd like to get a, paint me a picture of the history of what it looked like 10 or 15 years before this resident moved in and where we are today.
Yes. As we understand it, because the deck was, the back deck was not permitted, so there was no specific need as far as an application is concerned. There is photographic evidence, it actually was about 12 feet wide by the length of the house, the previous deck. It connected to the side deck, which is, there's some oral landing that's there right now, that's not the issue, that was permitted prior. And, well, because that's, about the, you said it was 12 feet wide, related to the house, wrapped, connected to the side, little porch deck that's there. And it was built by the previous owner, again, the house was constructed originally in 69, there were two subsequent owners before the general, who actually built the, built the deck on. And then in 2010 is when the D'Amicos actually purchased the property and learned the less due diligence.
Thank you.
Were your clients represented when they bought the house? Did they have a broker? Was there a broker listed in the house?
I would imagine there was a broker, it was listed in the house, yes.
My question, and I may have missed this, but pardon me, how deep was the previous deck? You said 12 feet?
It was extended 12 feet out from the house, the request for this deck was 10 feet.
10 feet, and was the current depth approximately of the gravel that's there now?
That was completely under the deck, and there's, you can see also from the photographs, it's a little slightly, because it's been there for about 20 years, I'm sure, but that also went out to the extent of the previous deck, which is 12 feet. And that would be, I'm sure that the question would be a longer answer, is one of the things that the D'Amicos have said they would do, take it for what it's worth, or as a condition of potential approval, is that they would get rid of the gravel area, this is not a strip of gravel that a lot of people have running against their foundation to prevent backwater rain, it's fairly wide all the way around the house. They would, they would get rid of it, honestly, they would probably end up getting rid of it anyway, but it's there, and they said, I agree with you, this will absolutely re-vegetate all other areas of the property that were somewhat, we've done in the extreme, what that does is we want.
My last question, do you infer that the DEP interprets this as an impervious service?
All gravel surfaces typically are considered an improvement on the property, and toward that end, they consider it an impervious service. They readily acknowledge, as does everybody, that gravel is permeable, but rather than natural earth, anything other than natural earth is basically considered impervious, even portions of, flash on papers, for instance.
Sure. Great, thank you.
I'll kind of save my questions.
I want to do this first. So, basically, we normally do, you went over a little bit, but I just want to go through questions quickly, so you can start us in real basic answers to those. And landing question, cannot give a reasonable return unless the variance is granted? Just a brief.
Yes. Normally I'd say, that's correct, and leave it there. In this particular case, standing where we're already at here in the application, reasonable return again is somewhat subjective, in this case, we're going to communicate a lot of different things. Normally, if this house had, if somebody just wanted to put a deck on the back, I would be very excited, because the house would have typical windows, as most modern houses have, looking out the back of the marsh or whatever, and call it good. In this particular case, they purchased the house, their problem, believing that the deck, that what had been there, could be reinstated quite simply, actually getting permit this time. So, it's, it becomes, the term reasonable becomes a challenge, because their purchase of that house was in part predicated on them being able to get the back deck, because of the sliding doors that were already there. If they hadn't put the doors there, or if the doors hadn't been there, then if they just wanted a deck, they would say, no, sorry, that just doesn't work. Would they mind with you to be able to tell the client that? In this particular case, when you've got these sliders, when you've got the sonotubes in place, everything that we mentioned prior, it seems reasonable to assume that a reasonable return, and at some point, they're going to invest themselves in this property, as we almost do, they're going to go to somebody and say, use my house, and a lot of people are going to say, no, this absolutely advocates the deck off the back, it's not just a door without steps, it's three sliding doors that go nowhere. So toward that end, does they have a reasonable return? If somebody has a return, I would argue it's not reasonable.
Okay. The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood?
That's absolutely correct. Toward that end, the answer in the packet, the existing dwelling is non-conforming within a fifty-foot front yard setback in the area zone, and then a seventy-five-foot resource setback, which basically means that the property as it is today has absolutely no building on it. So in actuality, with no building on it, within which the existing structure could fit without a variance, closing construction would reduce non-conformity to both resource setback by pulling the existing deck and the reduction of the impervious service on the site from thirty-three point four to thirty point six. This is the actual unique circumstance of the property. Zoning overtook this property, and not just this one, most of them in that area, to the extent that there is no envelope, it can do anything without a zoning worth of appeals, anything construction to be allowed to have this up. So, because there is no envelope, so toward that end, it is absolutely due to the unique circumstance of the property itself.
Rating of the variance, a lot of the essential character of the locality?
In fact, I would call your attention to photos again, if you wouldn't mind, take a look at some of the surrounding properties. This house is the least sizable, and that which has very little addition other than the specific house itself. Every other house that's along that road, that's with a near area photograph, again, has, once almost a compound, it's beautiful, it's huge, and it has a lot of additional permanent structures to it, every one. And by the way, this house is actually set back, or sort of toward the road, closer to the road than any of the other structures that are there. So all of the other structures that were built there are at least, if not more, close to the actual edge of the littoral waters than this one is. So as far as essential character of the neighborhood, adding a deck onto this house would actually substantially improve the character of the neighborhood, albeit with the caveat that these, all these houses, the vast majority of these houses have a landscaping that really prevents anybody from, from one house kind of seeing what's going on in the other house. But when you take it all in kind, the value of the properties in that particular area, this would be the least expensive one. So the essential character of the neighborhood would be substantially improved if this variance is granted.
The hardship is not the result of an action taken by the applicant prior?
It's purely due to the house's construction in sixty-nine, it's due to Z O R in that particular.
But at that point, it kind of was, it did something illegally that they weren't supposed to do.
And that was rectified, they took it down, which is again, why we're here tonight, because we wanted to approach it, and we realize it's a challenge. When we take a look at the circumstances around the property, relative to the other properties that are there, character of neighborhood, is it going to actually pique of the wetlands, if it's going to cause any problems as far as earthwork, which is typically what the stipulation of seventy-five feet is all about, and that's not percent twenty-five feet is even more about? The answer is no, because we've already got some construction that's between the proposed deck and the marsh.
Thank you. To keep you up there, while Mr. Longstaff gives us the letters, I'll save my questions for the rest of the board as well.
Okay, just a few things. To the point of the D E P permit that Mr. Fisher referred to, that they already have in hand, I have a letter from Mahdi Arba, who issued that permit, and she explains how the permit by rule works, and that the application, description of the project said reconstruction of a deck pursuant to section two of chapter three oh five. She explains some things, but in the last paragraph is the permit one, and she says, I would also like to direct your attention to section one E one of chapter three oh five, in which the rule states, a violation occurs when an activity occurs that is not allowed under the permit by rule, whether or not a permit by rule notification form has been filed with, or and/or approved by the D E P. While you did file a permit by rule notification form, and it was accepted and approved by the D E P, since the permit by rules under section two are not applicable to activities that do not conform to the local shoreline zoning ordinance, any activity in violation of local shoreline zoning ordinances may be considered violations of law under chapter three oh four, three oh five. Therefore, in no way is a P B R evidence that a planning board should grant a variance. That's from Mahdi Arba, who issued the permit by rule. Mike Morse, the shoreline coordinator for the state, also wrote a letter in response, which I had in front of me, I'm going to edit out. Mike Morse's comments are that, basically, he reiterates that, you know, the undue hardship test is four parts, that this construction, this project happened long after the shoreline zoning ordinance was in place, that the applicant states, refers that the previous deck was part of the original design of the house, when constructed in nineteen sixty-nine, and it was not, obviously, it was not part of the house, the three sliding glass doors were added as part of the unpermitted activity that happened sometime in the late nineties or early two thousand. As far as the existing dwelling not yielding a reasonable return without the deck, the proper consideration of the application of a reasonable return prong, the undue hardship test is unfounded, without a debt, the dwelling unit can still continue to be used, and Mr. Fisher alluded to this, it still can be used as a dwelling unit, and that is a reasonable He contends it would be no closer to the coastal wetland than the existing structure, by reasoning that the septic system is closer to the shoreline zone. The septic system is not a structure, it's covered by vegetation. The whole part of shoreline zoning, the whole reason for shoreline zoning is to continue to maintain a vegetative buffer between the resource and development. And the septic system is a subsurface structure with treated water, that's first pretreated in a septic tank, and then flows to the disposal beds, or whatever type of construction that that is made of, and then it's dissipated into the soil, it does not flow over ground. It's not a structure, it has no bearing on the deck being anywhere near as close to or as, and the rules allow replacement systems to be placed within that distance to the shoreline zone. So it's perfectly legal to have the septic system, that's a perfectly illegal installation, the deck was not. Talked about the permit by rule, they mentioned in several places, the applicant mentions that without the deck, there's a safety issue with the structural, largely because of the doors. Well, the simple solution to that is to simply remove the doors, and replace them with the windows that were there originally. All of that work was done without a permit, any violation. And finally, not finally, but the next point is, with regard to the gravel surface underneath the proposed deck, that was also illegally placed there, and you can have to keep that anyway. Surprisingly, the code office never made them remove that and re-vegetate that, because that was a violation as well. So you can't really use that as a reason for putting a deck over the top of it, it shouldn't be there, it's illegal. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I pulled from the file, June nine, two thousand and five, subject appeal number twenty-two fifty-three, ninety-three Spurwick Road. Dear Mr. Howard, this was the owner at the time, by both the Scarborough's Unboarded Appeals, on June eighth, two thousand and five, your appeal against the code enforcement officer's decision has been denied. The board determined that the code officer had not aired a determining that the construction of the deck in the chimney needed to be through required setbacks in the R S zone and the shoreline zone, according to the Scarborough's zoning ordinance, section five C four, the appeal of the same nature may not be brought before the board if anyone adheres. They already denied this appeal back in two thousand and five. The situation has not changed, the rules have not changed, the same rules are in play today as they were in two thousand and five.
I'll go back down, we'll stop at some place. Just looking through that, I have a lot of problems. There, like Mr. Longstaff said, you put the windows back, but not only that, being insurance, I've seen people that actually buy devices, you don't need to put a block in there, you can buy a device to make the sliding glass door unusable, so it actually locks it without that device. So I've actually seen people that have died, and how has that gone out, because I've questioned it, and I've gone back to the writers and said, this is a door that's going down to the ground, what's your take on it? This is entirely from insurance perspective. They said as long as they have it with that block and device in there, it was fine, because I would have probably just told them, we couldn't insure it, but they haven't allowed it to be based upon that. Now, as far as entryways, are there two points of aggression to this house? I live in the sliding glass door?
Yes, there's a front door and a sliding door.
Okay. I'll bring it down, Mr. Longstaff, can you go down with the questions?
Yeah. I agree with most of what was just stated. I think I struggle with questions one, three, and four, excuse me, one, two, and four. And I think your argument around reasonable return holds no water, as far as I'm concerned. I apologize for saying that as open and honest as I am, but I read this, and then I said no way. And again, they purchased this home because they thought it had value, and I'm sure they wanted to have a deck, but I'm sure the value of this home was not based around putting a deck on it. And so if you're saying it's an unreasonable return, I don't believe that it's a thirty or forty percent hit on the value of that home by not having a deck, and that's the kind of impact for reasonable return that I would say you would have to have. So by changing those sliders out to blazing, I empathize with their safety issue, I get that. Having had small children, I would be weary of having sliders myself, I think I would have changed it out to blazing already, to keep them from going out that way. Now, that was their choice, they put slats up, which works, and that's fine, but I think that itself says there was a problem going in, and they knew it. Now, they were not in a financial position to find out, because they weren't ready to put the deck on, for whatever reason, and then they found that out when they were ready to do that. So I apologize for that, but I'm voting no on one. On two, I have the same kind of argument. Your point is that the circumstances of this property are very unique, and I'm saying, if you look at multiple homes to either side of it, it's not unique, they share the same problem. The way the wording of that question is, it says the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property, and the criteria applies to the property, not people. And it's, it's an uncommon condition, not shared with other neighbors, no way. Look at the other neighbors, they're, you're all landlocked, in small areas where you don't have large buildable lots, so everybody's going back for a variance to do anything on those properties. So I can't with a straight face answer that question that, yes, this person has a unique problem, because they all have that same problem. It's unique to shorefront property just like this. And then item number four, hardship is not a result of the action of this applicant, hate to say it was, because they bought something that was non-conforming, yet it was an illegal installation, it was taken down, and now they have no more right to put that back in, because it's still illegal. And I don't think the ordinance changed from when it was removed until now. So they have no legal right to put this in, and so again, I have to vote no on that as well. So because of those three, I have to vote no on this.
Mr. Loizel did a good job summarizing what I've been thinking, and Mr. Crockett as well regarding insurance and safety issues. Us two little kids, I remember, how it had to last this long. I struggle with number four the hardest. Again, I was only a Realtor for a long time, this may be our new member, it's always in common, but you know, I mean, he went and purchased the house, and never even did any sort of due diligence, you know, any Realtor would know that they have to disclose that this deck cannot go here. So it's discouraging to hear them kind of say, oh, well, I didn't know, I mean, that's a very big purchase for someone, and to say, to not even inquire as to why there are doors run back, no deck, and not to even report it. You know, I think it was essentially along with the owner, if I ever put those doors in, it knocked them down.
I'm struggling with this one as well, and trying to, trying to make a case for determining, you know, the gravel that's around the area, the impervious surfaces, so, however, the point stated correct, it's easy to swap out those windows, and you do have access to the backyard through the side of the house, that you still walk around, it's not like you're cut off from the backyard from that access. And I understand from looking at all the other homes here, yes, there are other structures in some of these other homes there, but I don't have any information of those, basically just going at this home by itself. I agree with Mr. Loizel that, I don't have an issue with number three. And piggybacking from Mr. Shute's comments on number four, you know, due diligence, due diligence, and you know, we try as hard as we can, but it's up to professionals that we hire, as a Realtor or a inspector, things like that, to present the information to them. It's very unfortunate in this case, but I don't see a positive outcome for them for this, unfortunately.
I have my issues on this. We're seeing trend, I don't know where the trend is coming from, but I believe the board can probably attest to this, this is probably the fourth or fifth appeal we've had in the last five months that is coming before us, because the Realtor people understand what could be done, or what couldn't be done, or why that deck wasn't there. So I'm thinking, I'm kind of frustrated with that from the real estate perspective, because it's a big purchase, and I'm not doubting the real estate profession by any means, but this is literally the fourth or fifth one that's been, what's being addressed to us, is that they just didn't know. And when you're purchasing a property like this, you have to know. I mean, you can see something was there, you got to ask the question as to why, and get your professional to look into it and find out. They would have been able to find out that it was denied once before. I mean, Mr. Longstaff's, both of his letters, I think both of these things are pretty forthright, saying, can't deny. I mean, even the circumstances there should be removed. And the prior owner obviously created this situation, and they did it illegally, they put the doors on illegally, they put the service illegally, they put the deck illegally, yeah, they removed it, but I don't see the board coming back and saying, okay, because the owner said it was okay, and he went and did what he was told to do by the code enforcement office, we're going to let them put back something that was illegal in the first place. I don't see that. I don't see, I don't see D meeting, like Mr. Longstaff, I mean, Mr. Loizel said, I don't see C meeting, it's pretty basic down there, a lot of houses share the same characteristics. It's pretty basic down there, a lot of houses share the same characteristics. I don't see, I mean, B, possibly, but I think you can yield a return, with the body if it couldn't be able to return. So, I mean, there's, there's alternative ways, I sympathize with them for not having a deck, but I don't see any way that this can be approved by anybody, and I'm seeing a consensus of that. I mean, I'd like to get your comments on this too, just so you can put some comments on the record for finding some fact, and kind of help us out on some of this, and let us know our Realtors' perspective on it, if you could.
So my, my biggest question that was going through my mind as we were listening to all the facts on this was, at what point was it discovered that this deck was, you put on illegally? And at what point was it determined that it needed to be removed? And it appears from what Mr. Longstaff has said, that in 2005, there was a letter that's in the file stating that that was when the deck was ordered to be removed, and that was in the property file and a matter of public records. So regardless of whether there was representation by a Realtor, or whether it was just the owner, you know, prospective buyer's due diligence period, that they should have investigated this, the information was readily available as they were making their decision to purchase. And to come back at this point and think that a new, a new decision should be made in that, I think is maybe overly optimistic in their, in their, I would say that, you know, their recourse really is not with this board, it would be with the prior owner who suggested that they could do this, or it might be with, you know, a representative that, or an agent that represented them. But either way, they had the opportunity, I believe, to, to discover this information prior to making the purchase, prior to deciding the price of their offer, and prior to determining the value of that home. And so my problem with this would be that I think they had all, all the information they needed, and should not be expecting that this be, that this be changed.
I was on the zoning board when this first came up back in 2005. Different circumstances because somebody did something illegal. Mr. Dico is not trying to do something illegal, he's just trying to do something that he was told he could do. But that doesn't, that doesn't allow him to do something that the law says that he can't do, regardless of whether he was honest or dishonest. We turned it down the first time back in 2005, primarily because it was too close. It wasn't, we didn't, we didn't turn it down because we wanted to get the guy in trouble or anything like that. He just did something illegally, he did something without approval. I can't, I can't support any of this. It doesn't really have any effect on this thing, but one, two, and four, definitely, there's no, there's no hardship there. One thing I'd like to ask Brian, Brian, is there a possibility of putting a patio out back? Or is that more of the impervious situation? I don't know, maybe it wins out of the impervious.